Kick it off, just. Give me a thumbs up, Roland, you're ready.
The recording has begun.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, to the meeting of the Gardner zoning board of appeals. On April twentieth, approximately six o'clock. And before we begin, I'm going to go over a number of ground rules by which this board operates under. In pursuant, the government bake Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order. Suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL chapter thirty A paragraph twenty. And the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order. Imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the gardener zoning board of appeals will be conducted by remote participation. And on the city's YouTube channel. The audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive. Record of the proceedings will be posted on the city's website. As soon as possible after the meeting, I'll just note that. This will be posted shortly because it is not going on YouTube right now. The city's finance committee is meeting. And they're getting preference on YouTube, but this is being recorded and will be transferred to YouTube as soon as possible. Since the meeting is being conducted via Zoom. All votes taken will be right by roll call. And all participants to raise their hands to be recognized. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in a sequence in which they appear in a public notice. The board is under no obligation to adhere to this sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public. And no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by an agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. A butters to the property present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board. Let's see here, the board must render its decision regarding variance request. Within one hundred days after the application was duly filed with the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing. Within sixty-five days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision regarding special permits within ninety days after the closing of the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote in favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted. The right to appeal the decision of the board is provided for in the zoning act. And more information can be found online. Under chapter forty A section seventeen under mass general law. No variance or special permit. Or any extension modification or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification. From the city clerk that twenty days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office. And no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district. The burden of supporting the need for the variance or special permit. Rests with the applicant or the rep or representative of the applicant. The board request that each person identify himself. Or herself as to name an address. Before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing. And now lastly, raise your hand will be Randy Haglen. Thank you, Randy. Michael Gary. Okay, Michael is not pictured, but. On the screen, he's right below Randy. And myself, Ray LaFond is chair. This meeting will be recorded and live streamed as I stated on YouTube. Does anyone object to this? I see no objections. And due to the meeting being held remotely, we ask that questions be held until prompted. And should you have a question, please raise your hand to the screen. Phone in attendees will be asked periodically if they have any questions. At certain times, we may mute your mic so as to clearly hear who is speaking. We ask for patience when questions arise, so we may respond accordingly. And we can prevent talk over and then otherwise it becomes confusing. Okay, so we're going to begin. And I will go out of order right to start because I'm going to read the case and then I'll move forward with it. This is the.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Because I noticed that there's quite a few people. Who their video is not showing or maybe calling in. We just want to mention that those people who are calling in. To raise your hand to. For us to acknowledge you have a comment, you press star nine on your telephone.
Thank you, Randy.
And to unmute and unmute your phone, it's star six. And that's a toggle, it's either star six to muted or star six to unmuted. That's all, thank.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haglen. Okay, this is the app application to operate a contractor's yard at zero Matthew Street Gardner Mass parcel ID. W three seven dash two one dash one located in rural residential two zoning district. RR two is denied as it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five. Attachment one call and one table abuses number fifty-nine. Contracting business and contractors yard including storage in the open in the city code of Gardner. The zoning court states zoning code states that your use requested is a not permitted use. In the RR two zoning district. Okay, that is submitted by. Mister T Slocum owner and president and. Why I took this out of order because this afternoon we received a letter from Mr. Slocum. Requesting to withdraw this application and I will read the letter. It was received April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Addressed to the city of Gardner zoning board, one fifteen Pleasant Street Gardner Mass. Our E case two oh two one dash oh four dash oh three SP. Dear board members, after speaking with Trevor Buregard. And Roland Jean, we are respectfully withdrawing our application without prejudice at this time. Thank you for your time sincerely. Timothy Slocum, president and owner. Okay, do I hear a motion? To accept this letter with withdrawal for Timothy Slocum?
I'll make a motion. To withdraw the application.
Second.
Timothy Slocum without prejudice.
Okay, thank you, was that you, Michael?
Yes, I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? No further discussion, all all those in favor of permitting this withdrawal without prejudice? Say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Withdrawal approved. Okay, moving on to the next.
Mister Chairman, if I may.
Who is speaking?
Roland Jean.
Rachel, do you pick that one up?
Sorry, what?
Somebody was speaking.
Roland, the ones Roland wants to speak to you.
Oh, Roland.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I would, I would like to ask the board's permission to waive the requirements for submission of an application for Mr. Slocum. He did ask for withdrawal today. Yeah, I have a meeting with him tomorrow morning to try to sort out the application and get it correct. He'd like to get on next month's meeting. I think that in this instance, if we can get it hammered out tomorrow, that we should waive the requirements for the application to have been in today. But I need the board's permission to do that.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Jean. Do I hear a motion to move on Mr. Jean's request to proceed on that? Of waiving the fee. For this next application.
Have a discussion, have a discussion, Mister Chairman.
After.
It's ready.
Seconded, I will.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion then.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion on the request from Mr. Jean.
Question, has this this ever been done before in your recollection, Mister Chairman?
In terms of waiving the fee?
Yeah.
Well, we have waived the fee on certain cases going forward. Normally, if it's a fault of the applicant, we usually do not rate waive the fee. If the board makes a request. To do that, then the fee is waived that the board's request that they have no forward. That's generally.
That's for continuance, that's for continuance, yes, but this is the actual application fee. Maybe a question through the chair to Mister Jean. What what is, maybe you can elaborate a little bit on the rationale for his recommendation to waive the fee. Especially since we received this letter withdrawal, basically the eleventh hour.
Allow you to answer that, Mister Jean.
Apparently, the board misunderstood my request, I'm not asking to waive the fee. I'm asking to waive the requirement for the application to have been in by four thirty today to get on next month's agenda. As long as we can make the, as long as we can make the required. Advertising. Then I see no reason not to allow it to be on next month's agenda, but it's at the board's.
Okay, that's the board, that's the board's error, thank you for clearing that up.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mister Jean.
Okay, so.
No further questions.
No further, Mike.
I have no questions.
And I'd like to submit, you know, ask for an amended motion. To allow the applicant. To complete the the application tomorrow, missing the deadline. By one day, but that deadline is not always cast in stone. As we just allow enough room to make have corrections, et cetera, and get the applications into the. Garden news with an appropriate time if there's some issues that arise. So that's my motion to allow it to be completed tomorrow.
I'll make that motion, Mister Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, any further discussion, is everybody clear on this? Okay, then all those in favor of allowing the applicant to complete his application tomorrow? And then submitted immediately or on?
Aye.
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 Okay, approved. Sir, I did see your hand go up, but it was not pertinent to this motion. Okay, the second case before the board. Is application by Jason Thailand to construct a single family zone. A single family home on lot some lot forty-two. Summit Ave Gardner Mass parcel ID are eighteen dash eight dash twenty-two. Located in single family residential one district zoning district SFR one. Is the is denied as it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five. Article six twenty attachment two colon one. The city quote of Gardner. Just a Thailand or P land agent or attorney.
I'm Mister Thailand.
Yes, sir.
I work for a Mackey's corporation.
You're looking for what?
I I work for Mackey Corporation, we own the land.
Yes.
And we are looking to see if we can a variance on the frontage of the property to put a single family home there.
Okay, do you, the board members have had an opportunity? To look at the case, other interested parties have not, so will you please explain, you just mentioned. On the frontage, et cetera, can you please explain? The frontage issues, the size of the lot. Et cetera, all the information that would be pertinent for the board to consider making a move and a motion on this.
All right, so the road is on a Dillon Road, the lots on the left-hand side of the road. We have fifty feet of frontage and I think the town asks for a hundred feet. And the lot itself is like an L-shaped lot. We're hoping to put the house on the back right-hand corner of the lot. Right now, on the L shape on the left side corner, there's a house in the front. We're hoping to stay as closest or as far away as that house as we can, so we don't bother the people that live there. I mean, if you give me a second, I can look up the size of the lot, I just don't have that information with me, I have it on a. Piece of paper I have right here on my phone. Sorry, the lot's a hundred and ninety-seven feet long. By. Hundred and thirty feet in the back. By eighty-seven feet, by seventy-six feet, by eighty, it's a weird shaped lot. And we're just, I'm trying to stay away. I think it's number forty-one. Summit Ave, there's a, the lot goes like L shape behind it. I'm trying to stay as far as away as I can of that person as of course as I can.
Okay, what does the terrain of the lot look like?
The terrain on a lot is, it's in fact, I'll probably have to. We we, as a Mackey's got the land from a contractor with a. More or less take it from them for some money that was owed to us. And the customer since then has bought other lots and built other houses around it. So we definitely have to, it's already been clear cut once. We'd have to stump it. And fill in the right side because it's on a hill. We're, you know, we're trying not to disrupt the neighborhood as much as we can.
Okay. You said that was owned by a prior contractor, did he own that land? Because you said he did build some houses, some adjacent property, did he own one time? That lot plus lots that have butted it and he was the common owner?
I, the way I think I I understand it is that he tried to buy another piece of land behind it. To coming on different ways to the lot. But I guess there was a old, like a firewood or wood road or whatever they call it, paper road. And so and since then has bought that and built a house there. So that is the only piece of lot, that's the only way I can get into the lot itself is off of Summit Ave.
Well, there's another, no other land adjacent to it that could be purchased to add to that to give it the frontage?
No, there is no more land.
I know in the in your package. The only drawing we have. Is from, it's a public drawing. It just it's shaded rose, it doesn't show anything about elevation. And actually, it's pretty, it's not very clear to pick up where the the parcel is actually located. There is a drawing, another one that was done by, let me see what was done first. Well, it doesn't, just as for Mark and just his lot forty-two. So now, on the variances, you need to address three issues. Does it create or aggravate a safety hazard? If this is granted to build a house? Does it derogate from the intent of the ordinance? It does in a way because that's why you're before the board tonight. And is there a hardship due to shape topography? Soil conditions, significant financial hardship to this property? If the variance is not granted, those are the issues you have to address and present that information to the board. So that's your case and that if you want to do that tonight, you can do that. In some cases, some of the applicants are completely aware of what they need to present. And we have allowed them, excuse me, allowed them in the past. To continue the hearing to the to next month at the applicant's expense. And either hire an attorney or have another presentation ready to address those issues. So if you would like to address the issues, I'll give you the opportunity to do that. If you choose to ask for a continuance, the board can vote on allowing that to happen. So it's really, it's your choice, sir.
Yeah, I, in fact, I wrote all the the information on the application of the issues that would. I didn't have that, in fact, I'm away on vacation, I don't have the application with me. I kind of spelt it out on the paperwork of the issues that we had of like what you just talked about.
Okay.
I didn't know I had to re re explain it again, I never did this before, so.
I understand, and that's why I was saying you have the opportunity to ask for a continuance. To come in next month and present the information to address those issues. It's really not up to the board to, you know, present the issues for you. It's really up to the applicant to present their issues.
Okay, then we'll have to, I'll have to go forward with it, yes, if we can go to next month.
Right, so you're requesting that you would like to continue to next month?
Yes.
And remember, I stated at your expense or the applicant's expense. Okay, well, board members, you've heard. The applicant recommend to rehear this next month. Do I hear a motion to approve the continuance? Of this application to next month?
So moved.
Okay, Mike, thank you, Randy?
I'll second the motion as well, but I want a quick discussion, if I may.
Okay. So let me, we got them too, okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second and I'll open for discussion, go ahead, Randy.
To the chair, to the applicant, one of the things I noted on within the application. There's actually two different square footages listed for this property. The assessor's office has it as seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty-two square feet. Whereas the plan that was submitted shows the square footage as twenty thousand two hundred and ten square feet. So when you come before us next month, I just want to, if you can determine which is the correct number and. Find out what the discrepancy is and what what it happens to be, I think that would be helpful from my perspective.
Thank you, Mister Haglen. I think one thing I'd like to add also, Mister Haglen is. I do not see anywhere in the package that was submitted. As with a possible location of the home wouldn't actually be in any driveways for entrance egress onto the property.
It was submitted, Mister Chairman, it was. It's the one that's the lot forty-two Summit Avenue was a fax, says from Mark.
Okay.
Proposed house. Something like that.
Proposed house.
Yeah, it shows the driveway off of Summit Avenue.
Okay.
It's kind of a hard plan to read, and it was also a reference in the. There was also a reference in the attorney's letter to a. A and R plan that if the applicant could try and get his hands upon and present to the board. Where there was actually, there was some. Combining of these lots and things, there's a whole narrative in here that there was a discussion with the planner at the time and. Whatever, but I I think there's a, there's a reference to a an A and R plan that I think. I think I'd want to see the basis of as well.
Yes, there is a reference to an A and R plan.
So I mean, the city should have a copy of it, if the applicant doesn't have a copy, the. City should have a copy in their files someplace or it can be obtained online on the registry of deeds if it was recorded.
Okay, Mister Jean, you had, yeah, hand up.
I'd just like to point out to the board that while the the front. Lot line is fifty feet long, that there is not fifty feet of frontage on the lot. And I think the the amount of frontage should be noted for the next meeting.
Okay, so we can verify. Those really two issues to obtain that A and R law, A and R plan, if possible. And there's a question on the actual frontage on the property, if that could be validated. Verified and presented next month. When you do your presentation or whoever does the presentation.
I think that would be, that should show up on the NR plan then.
Yep. It should. Okay, Mike, you have any further questions or discussion?
Have none.
Mister Jean.
There's another hand up, Mister Chairman. Karen Graves has her hand up.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Karen Graves, I live on Claremont Street, I'm in a butter. So I would be below the house that would be being built. And my concern is the amount of water that's on the hill. And any building disrupting that and making more water drain down onto the two houses below.
My number is your house on Claremont Street, what number is your house on Claremont Street?
Thirty.
Okay, this. Okay.
All set, Randy?
Yeah, yeah, it showed the map that was provided here. The GIS map shows where number thirty is in relation to the property, so. But I don't want to get into more discussion with drainage and water and stuff at this point.
I agree, I don't, we're not going to go into any further discussion because the actually the full presentation. Will be done next month. And then everybody will have an opportunity to raise their voice. And state whether they're for or against or what pluses or minuses are. Instead of doing it, you know, months apart and people will forget and. So just keep it all condensed into next month's meeting.
Okay.
All right, you'll receive a notification.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, welcome. We have a motion on.
I think also, if you're, I think also, if you're possibly looking for a map of how things are situated. If you contact Rachel in the office, she might be able to email you a. Copy assessors map or something where it shows. Where relative location of the properties is low is.
Oh, I've had my, I've had my lot surveyed. In the fall, so I know where my boundaries are, but the water was my main concern.
We'll talk about that next month.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then I'm looking for, we've got the motion on the floor. It has been seconded, we've had discussion, so all those in favor of granting the applicant to continue to next month, say aye.
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 Okay, and you're an I, right, Michael?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to the next case. You all set, sir, do you know what really you need to do for next month for this application?
Yep, yeah, in fact, I have a, in fact, I have a survey company working on the survey, reserving the land right now.
Excellent. All right, that will help clear up, I think, a lot of things and and we can look at it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next case. Before the board. Is. It's West Mini, West Mini Storage. Application to operate a warehouse and storage with professional office. At one sixty-one Chelsea Street Gardner Mass. Parcel ID are one seven dash two zero dash one six. Located in single family residential one zoning district. Is denied because it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five. Article one colon one, number thirty-one. Professional office and number seventy-six. Warehouse and storage facilities in the city of the city code of Gardner. The zoning code states that your requested use is a not permitted use in single family one zoning district. So the Mister Blander agent or attorney?
Yeah, Brian Marchetti with McCarty Engineering, forty-two Jungle Road Lemister. I'm here with the applicant Alan Belanger of West Mini Storage to present tonight.
Okay, so if you want to go into a little more detail, Mister Marchetti, on. I took a ride by the other day and I do know the building, so. If you could please, you know, discuss a little of how the building is being proposed. But you, because it does say storage. And it's kind of a different shape than what people might think for a self-storage building. And the offices, et cetera, if you could address those issues. And then the three issues for a variance.
I can certainly get into the details and Al Belanger can explain the specifics of of the company.
Okay.
So, again, Brian Marchetti with McCarty Engineering. We prepared the zoning variance for this parcel on Chelsea Street. It's an existing building or existing lot that had a. Commercial building on the property that's now been inhabited for more than two years, so it's since has lost its zoning. Nonconformant status. The existing building was constructed in nineteen thirties, it's been used as a warehouse and commercial building. Since. So the applicant's currently in the. So the applicant's currently in the process of approaching sales now with the current owner. Uh, and would like to rehabilitate the building to operate his office out of that building. Which would be a combination of, uh, as I said, his office and then warehouse. So we've applied for the building permit, as you stated. Uh, we received our zoning denial. And, uh, we've submitted this application with, uh, answers to the three questions that are required for zoning variance, which I can go through now. So a little enforcement for the provisions of the code would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise relating soil condition, shape, topography of the land and structures. So it's our opinion that the little enforcement, uh, would put a financial hardship on the applicant. Because the property has been used in the same fashion since it was constructed, uh, which has been almost ninety years. Additionally, if we had to follow a little enforcement, uh, of the zoning in order to purchase the property to put up a residential building, uh, would require the acquisition of the land, the demolition of the structure, reconstructing to current code. It would result in a significant, uh, financial investment, which likely would far outweigh the value of the property. You know, in, in, in likely without being able to use the site as it was previously used. You know, would, would make a residential development unfeasible, and it would likely stay in the condition it's in. The second point is regarding the non-detrimental to the public good or creating or aggravating a safety hazard. Uh, it's our opinion again that the public good will not be altered as the proposed use is intended to be similar to the previous use that has been in existence since the nineteen thirties. And I'd like to point out that there are other similar commercial uses on Chelsea Street, uh, within the SFR one zone. Specifically one thirty-four Chelsea Street, which is about a hundred and twenty feet, uh, from the property, which is right across the street. And then further down the road near the intersection of Summer Street and Chelsea Street, uh, twenty-one Summer Street is also using this fashion within the SFR one zone. And then the third point, desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent for the purpose of the code. Preamable by law states that the bylaw's purpose is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Gardner. Granting of this use will allow this vacant property to be cleaned up and rehabilitated. And it will allow a business to be conducted within the city Gardner, which will contribute to the tax base of the city. So it's our opinion again that these proposed uses will have no detrimental impact on the butters or will create any potential hazards as the lot would be used as it had been, um, in the past. So, if there's any specific questions we can answer for you, we'd be happy to do that. Like I said, Al is here with me as well and getting into a little more detail about exactly what West Mini Storage is and how he operates.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marchetti. I'll ask my board members if you have any questions of Mr. Marchetti at this point.
And for me?
Okay.
I guess, um, yeah, I, I, I have a few questions, actually. I, I guess I'm trying to understand what the utilization of this is going to be, because I was going through the application and it says, you know, the, there's gonna be a commercial vehicle with a tow truck inside existing building, garage or driveway. Truck to transport storage boxes, what, what, what is, what is gonna be the utilization? Can you explain better the utilization that's proposed on this, this location?
So, Al Belanger owns a West Mini Storage. He has other properties in other towns where they have mini storage units. So basically Conex boxes, small mobile units that are placed on other properties. So, he runs his business out of another office in Westminster that, you know, we're not talking about a self-storage facility with multiple buildings and garage bays that are, you know, a hundred units on the site. This is basically his office is gonna be there. Um, there are a couple of garage bays on the property. He's going to be doing some renovations of the building to facilitate that, so that, he'll be able to, if, if there's any damage to a box, they're small boxes, they'll be able to pick it up, bring it there, do maintenance on it, and bring it back to his self-storage.
Could you repeat that last sentence you cut out? I'm sorry. What, what, what did you just say?
So these mini storage units are, are like
Pods, like a pod type of thing?
Yep. So if, if they get damaged, you know, he has these on other properties in other towns. They have a truck that goes and picks them up, brings them back to the office in his yard. You know, they'll rehabilitate them, paint them, work on them, fix the hinges, do whatever needs to be done to maintain them and bring them back to the storage sites.
Will these, repair of these pod units be done inside the building, exterior of the building? Are there gonna be empty pods stored outside the building? Um, so tell us a little bit about that?
Yep, so there, that's what the garage bays are for. These pods are mobile, so they can be taken off the truck and rolled into the garages to be worked on.
So, the, the answer then is there'll be no repairing of the, the units outside of the building?
Uh, I, I mean, I, I'd, I'd like to say that the intent is to build, is to repair and work on these within the building, but there's a good likelihood that there'll be more than one that are gonna be worked on. So they'll have to have a temporary storage in the driveway while one's being worked on in the garage bays, so this isn't a self-storage site. It's not a site that's gonna have, y- you know, multiple pods lined up for long periods of time. You know, they'll be constantly in motion. They're gonna be taken off the truck, worked on in the garage bays. There may be pods in the driveway for a period of days, but not something that's gonna be a long-term storage that's happening outside on this property.
Typically, what, how, what's the length of these typical pods?
At this facility, Chelsea Street would really only handle my smaller ones, my twenty-footers. I don't think I'd be able to efficiently move a forty-foot unit around on that site.
That's why I asked.
So I'm thinking, we're not gonna bring any fraudies there at all. The truck that I use, I envision it being parked inside every night, so there's nothing outside. The rest of the bays, because there are some big bays, uh, we're thinking we're just gonna rent some of the bays out for storage. I don't think I'm gonna be able to utilize it all in terms of my repairs. I'm not looking to set up a big repair center here. This is for minor stuff, incidental stuff, not total rehabs of these boxes. We tend to sell the ones that need too much repair, but we're been on a steady diet of buying brand-new boxes to eliminate a lot of that maintenance as well.
Okay, so there's not gonna be, what you just mentioned, um, you order, you order pods and have a, a supply of those. Are you, you intend on storing empty ones there, waiting for somebody to call you and, and, you know, obtain a delivery for a storage pod?
There may be some in the parking lot. We're gonna have to let them. I put my own numbers on and my own decals. That we could probably do in the parking lot. I don't envision us doing anything else in the parking lot, other than they may come in, get unloaded, sit and wait to be going out. Those will be leaving, others will be coming back. It's gonna be a rotation, if you will.
Okay, I remember we visited this location, oh, five, six, seven years ago, I think, for, for another proposed activity. Um, when you refer to a driveway, is, are you talking about the area in essentially the U of the building? Where, where the U is located, or where, where?
There's actually a piece of land to the left of the building, a fifty-by-hundred spot that belongs, that goes with the property. And we're also in touch with it in the butter in the back for another fifty by a hundred. There's the whole rear of the building that we have no access to. So by purchasing another piece of land, we may have access to the back of the building.
So there's, you know, if we move for, this is step one. If we move forward with, you know, say we do get our approval for this, we're gonna have to propose a site plan to show a parking area, clearing some of the vegetation on the left side of the building to provide access in a parking lot, uh, so there's some maneuvering and, and, you know, we're not gonna be parking these things on the street.
Okay. Um, you're offered, you mentioned you're gonna be renovating portion of the building to become your office. Would that be on the, looking at the building on the far right of the building?
It is, it's actually the
But there's, well, there's already essentially an office there, as I recall.
There is, there is an office there.
Okay.
So we'll renovate that and instead of paying rent at an office, I'll have my own office.
Got it. You, um, you talk, in your application, you talked about exterior improvements. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
I think it's cleaning up of the landscaping. I think there's a couple spots in the building that need to be renovated inside of that U. They took down part of a silo there and they never finished buttoning up the front of it. We've got some doors to replace. We've got some windows to replace. Aesthetically, we wanna dress the place up, make it look good. We're not looking for a lot of alterations on the outside. We've got a fairly new roof. All of, the pointing between all the bricks is in pretty good shape. And we plan on leaving it as is, pretty much, but again, landscaping, there's some wild growth going on around the building. Few critters running around. I think once we clean it up, a lot of that goes away.
Yeah, and there'll be some, any accessibility, uh, issues we'll probably have to address with walkways and things like that.
Talk to us about your, uh, exterior lights. What do you, what are you thinking with regard to exterior lighting?
Well, I'm thinking of everything's gonna be on motion detectors, so when someone comes close to the building, it'll go on. Uh, we're not gonna allow people come to the building after certain hours in the evening. Nobody has any business there, if you will, if they're renting out a bay. So they'll have a curfew. Uh, like other buildings we have, we'll put a light that points down as opposed to a floodlight going out to, to annoy the neighbors. I mean, it can be annoying looking at a light flashing in your window. So we're looking for things that'll just vertically go down and light, it'll be on the motion sensor. So if somebody hears some noise outside, the light's gonna be on. They're gonna see who's there. It's not gonna be, gee, heard some noise over that window, what's going on? And that seems to have worked out pretty good for us on other properties.
Okay, uh, you just mentioned hours. What, what were your planned hours of operation?
Probably seven to seven.
Seven days a week? Monday to Friday?
Well, I never thought about the seven days a week, but seven to seven, um, if people are storing things, it's gonna be hard to keep them out of there on a Saturday and a Sunday when typically they have time free to go there. More so than during the week.
So how many, how many bays are going, I, I guess, I, I'm, you mentioned a couple of times, and I guess I'm I'm confused a little bit about the proposed use. I mean, we talked about your, you were gonna do the repair of it. We'll, we'll use the term pods. I know that's a trademarked thing, but I think that's probably, you know, the best thing that people can understand what we're talking about here. Repair and painting and whatever else of those, those pod areas. Where, where in, within the buildings are, are the typical storage places gonna be done? Is it gonna be partitioned off in the building and you buy? You know, a person comes in and says, I wanna rent a hundred square feet or whatever, and you, you know, you rent out a hundred square feet. What, what are we talking about?
I think the bay on the left at this point is probably gonna become four bays. That's twenty-eight by eighty-four. So I'm probably gonna rent out, I'd like to rent out just two spaces to be perfectly honest with you.
But they would be rented out for vehicles or, or boats or something, or what would they be rented?
There is a big demand for vehicles. Um, I have someone that wants to rent the bay now, and he's got some custom cars, and it's just, he likes to keep, he wants to keep everything in, in one location where now he's in my pods, he's got some here, some there, and he's looking to consolidate, so to speak. We're not sure.
Okay, so I mean, it's it's that type of storage. It's not gonna be stored short-term, month-to-month, where, you know, a person needs to store their house belongings for a month. So we're gonna see a constant influx of trucks unloading and loading, and do you envision that?
Uh, I envision that some people will probably storing some wholesale goods in there. History has taught me that once they put stuff in storage, we don't have a lot of transit people. Believe it or not, I thought it was gonna be more of a transit business. And it's not. Even pods that we deliver to sites, you would figure during construction, it'd be there for a month or two. We're finding everything's lasting a year or so. It's, again, we're learning the business. We've been at it for five years, but we're finding there's longevity in the storage. People don't wanna pot with their belongings, and the more this place they have to put them, the more stuff they put away.
Okay, I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund. I do have a couple, Mike, Mr. Gary first, do you have any questions?
No, I think Randy hit my questions.
Okay, I do have just a couple. We were talking about the pods and some in, some out, et cetera. You have any idea on the, the volume of the pods that would be on that property at any one time?
The ones that we'll be working on will probably be one or two in the building, and it could be a half a dozen on-site in the, in the pocket area, if you will.
Okay. Uh, would there be any, and I'm gonna use the term permanent, but I don't mean it in the true sense of the definition of permanent, because if they're gonna be in there to be worked on, they could be there for a week or something, but others that are waiting to be either rented or sold, those are what I'm calling as permanent. You know approximately how many of those will be? And where they will be stored on the property, and I guess leads to my next statement is, Mr. Marchetti, you stated that, you know, if you get approval for this, then you draw up a sort of a site plan or something. It'd be very helpful to this board, and I'm not saying it has to be the finalized site plan, but draft site plan to show us where the driveway is gonna be, where the storage is gonna be, the mentions to that. Because just looking at the property, we can't really totally envision where these parcels are going to be. If they're gonna be stored in the back, access egress, because the building is pretty close to the the street, so we know where they can get there, but what's gonna happen on the periphery around each side of the building, et cetera, and and the dimensions, because if you're gonna store six of them, you know, and depending on the length, they're gonna go out, you know, a hundred and twenty feet or something like that to the rear. Well, we'd like to get, or a site plan, so we can see what it is and what it's gonna look like.
I envision that the only place we can, we can possibly store is on the left side. I also have, I also have a envision because of the grade there, that I'm gonna have to build some kind of a block wall. And I'm thinking that not to disturb the neighbors, is to put a fence up, that they're not gonna be able to see the pods, if you will. They're eight feet tall. There's no reason why I can't put a nice eight-foot fence up. And, you know, I, I guess I'm not looking to be a sore thumb to my neighbors. I'm trying, I'm gonna, we're gonna try to be a good neighbor with this. And I think by putting up a fence, and they can't see it, and we've got some nice landscaping on their side of the fence, and I'm hoping that, I think that'll blend right in with the neighborhood.
Okay, I think it's great to say this, but if we don't have any plan to look at, it's, it's verbiage that's given to us.
Yep.
Don't really see it, excuse me. And if, if we do grant it, then we go back and say, you know, this is what we talked about. Well, somebody changed their mind. So I think I'd rather have a document, the board would before, I'm gonna look at violate, excuse me, violate the zoning requirements without really having a picture in front of me of what the proposal is actually going to be. And that helps us as, you know, a snapshot of what it's going to look like with dimensions, storage, et cetera. We know what we're looking at. But to me, it's going in blind to say, yes, we'll grant you a variance to do this, but there's nothing concrete that we've agreed upon. Or if we require, uh, plantings, et cetera, we don't really know. And we don't know what your plan is for that either. So that's really where I'm coming from on that. So, I mean, that's something you can entertain with, um, you know, McCarty Engineering or Mr. Marchetti and lay out a plan for us.
Yeah, yeah. If, is there an opportunity to, uh, share my screen? I put together a draft, kinda talking with Al already, showing kinda what the intent is and our idea of how I would move forward with it.
Alright, I'm gonna see Rachel. Can he go ahead and share on the screen here?
Yes.
Okay, you can, and then I'd ask for a hard copy of that document to be submitted to us, our office. Go ahead.
Can you see what I'm looking at?
Yes, I can.
So, this is Chelsea Street. You can see here.
Correct.
On the I guess the look at the building from the street on the left side of the site is where you've got about fifty feet between the building and the property line. So this was just a draft, one initial concept, which isn't exactly what we're looking at now, but it's going to be a similar thing. This one here just showed ten parking spaces along that side of the building. So there's enough room over there to put zoning compliant parking spaces with a twenty-four-foot drive aisle. You'd need on the backside here retaining wall, there's a few feet of grade difference we need in order to keep the parking spaces up level with the building. So this was one concept earlier we were talking about, but what what we're talking about now is this side of the building is the eighty-foot long portion where Al's talking, there would be garage bays.
Well, yeah, yep.
So if that was the case, we wouldn't have parking spaces in front of them. This would be more of a driveway to pull in where they could pull into the spaces into the bays. And then Al would be storing his units, you know, in the driveway here and working in the building over here. So we have the same thing, a retaining wall and a fence on this side of the driveway.
And then, I mean, this gives us an idea. And if you're planning to put a fence where it's going to be. If you're planning to do shrubbery or something or somehow some kind of landscaping or level of landscaping where it's going to go.
Yep.
So we can, and then, you know, if you put some dimensions to it, Mr. Marchetti, it'll be helpful, but this is very helpful. If you can supply that document through to our office, because I'm sure I'm going to ask to go down and do a site visit.
Okay.
And we'll try to do the site visit timing that is is good for you. You know, we'll make sure we get the plans before we go.
Okay.
And all right, so that's what I think at least, you know, I think the board would be looking for. And you can notify Rachel at our office that, you know, my plans are ready, et cetera, and get them. And then we can schedule a site visit as soon as that's ready.
Okay.
Okay.
So when would the next hearing be that we'd be able to be on?
When would be the next time?
Yes.
I mean, once the plan is in, I can call it, we can contact the members and schedule a visit. And then the next meeting would be the second Tuesday of May.
Third.
Eighteenth.
Third.
Third Tuesday.
Yep, okay, third one.
I I think the sketch that's provided is very helpful because when the applicant mentioned bays, I I did not recall overhead doors. So I think that's a valuable addition by looking at this plan is, you know, the applicant is going to have to install some overhead doors or something on that side of the building because I I didn't recall that. I mean, maybe they're there and I missed it, but.
The talking about that side of the building, if that that one big bay is eighty-four feet long. And my preference would be to rent that out to two people and have put another door off of Chelsea Street because there's already one door coming in now, right? Right there.
On the side.
You know, right in the front, in the front would be to put another overhead door there and just split it up the middle and just have two bays, minimum traffic, minimum people. That would be my preference. Will it go that way? I don't know. Brian, and we talked about putting bays on that side if it didn't go that way. We have some structural timbers inside that may not allow it to be cut up from the parking area, if you will. Part of it will, part of it won't.
Yep. I think the board would like to see you get get a final drawing. I'll I'll say final, but as specific as it's going to be. And that's something now and then, you know, six months later, you wouldn't recognize the building from what we looked at for a drawing. Because big changes were made.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for that. You can take that off if you want. Thank you very much. You mentioned you seven to seven. Those are your hours, but no dates. You know, I don't I don't think the board would be against, you know, working like to noon on Saturday or something, you know, six days, but not on Sunday and probably on holidays. But that's just something to think about. We can talk about that a little bit more.
And I don't have any problems with those restrictions.
Okay. And you spoke about the lights. Try to get, I I want to get comfortable with the I call the inventory of pods that's going to be maintained on that property. Rentable, rentable for sale and being worked on. Try to get a maximum number of that if we can. And I did talk about the the draft plan. So that's what I have for questions at this point. Okay, so now we'll just move on and ask if any representatives of the city would like to speak regarding this application. Mr. Gene, Building Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to point out that our zoning. If a project requires the addition of fifteen parking spaces to the property, it triggers site plan review. So I saw there was twelve on the plan. I just want them to be aware that if it if it makes it to fifteen, you will be going before the planning board.
I'm just. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Gene?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any of others to the property who would like to speak in favor of this application? About us to the property to speak in favor of? Rachel, you'll let me know if someone has their hand up? Okay, so we have no butters to speak? No. Any of butters who would like to speak against this application? Any butters who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak and I'll open it to for or against this application? Any interested parties would like to speak for or against this application? Okay, no comments for or against? Mr. Gary or Mr. Hagland, do you have any further questions or additional questions for Mr. Belanger or Mr. Marchetti?
I don't.
Okay.
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, gentlemen, would you like to do a site visit on this property?
Once we have the plans.
Agreed.
I I I also I concur with that totally. And I'm just wondering, because we're receiving this plan after a public hearing, if I would entertain at the board, continue this to the to the May meeting and then leave the hearing open until the May meeting.
Mr. Gary, you have any comment on that?
I agree.
I agree also because otherwise, if there are some interested parties, they would not have the opportunity to view this data and voice an opinion if they do have one. So do I hear a motion then just to continue this application to the May meeting?
May eighteen.
May eighteen.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, then all those in favor of allowing this case to continue to the May eighteenth meeting, say aye.
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 Aye, aye.
All right, so Mr. Belanger and Mr. Marchetti, you do have a little extra time here because we want to keep it open that everybody will have the opportunity to see what's going to happen or what's proposed to happen on that parcel. Because if I'm correct, you addressed another building. Is that was Mr. Berg's building across the street? The the beige. Out of there or what?
It was Anderson Wood Turnings. So you're thinking Anderson Wood Turnings?
That's what.
Across diagonal across.
Yep. That was Anderson.
This this building here was owned by Mr. Berg.
Okay.
It originally was Columbus and Berg Construction Company.
There you go. I knew he was there somewhere. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So really, there's no further questions or comments on this case. It's continued to April. I mean, I'm sorry, May.
Yep.
You know, with this COVID, I'm not sure what day of month it is anymore. But to May and then we'll move forward from there. And, okay.
We'll get the plan generated over to you as soon as possible.
We do have, I think there was no more cases tonight. Well, Seth, the only item we have left is we have to vote on minutes from last month's meeting, the sixteenth of March meeting, and that's it. Other than that, I name parties on Zoom now may leave if they wish. And then I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from the March sixteenth meeting. You've had an opportunity to make comments, et cetera. Do you have any additional comments or recommendations? Randy, Mike, Mel, Dave.
I only have one. I only have one minor comment and and I think Rachel took care of it. So I'll second the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, any further discussion? None? Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. And I guess that brings to close this evening's meeting. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, seconded.
Any discussion? None. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Okay, everybody have?